Legislature and members of the Department of Planning of the County of Orange, New York, will meet at the Legislative Chambers of the Orange County Government Center located at 255 Main Street, Goshen, New York on Thursday, the sixth day of June 2024, beginning at 3:15 PM for the purpose of holding a public hearing and to solicit comments and concerns from the public with respect to the proposed modifications to Agricultural District Number One. Agricultural District Number One encompasses the towns of Blooming Grove, Chester, Cornwall, Crawford, Deer Park, Goshen, Greenville, Hamptonburg, Menasink, Monroe, Montgomery, Mount Hope, Newburgh, New Windsor, Walk Hill, Warwick, Waywayanda, and Woodbury, and the villages of Chester, Florida, Goshen, Maybrook, Montgomery, South Blooming Grove, Warwick, Washingtonville, and Woodbury, and is comprised of approximately 146,539 acres of land. Further notice is hereby given that copies of said documents relating to the 2024 Annual Modifications to the Orange County Agricultural District Number One Review are available at the Office of the Clerk of said county legislature, 255 Main Street, second floor in the Orange County Government Center, Goshen, New York, where they may be inspected or procured by any interested person during usual business hours, and on the Orange County website, www. orangecountygov.com. The following landowner is requesting inclusion of lands in the Orange County Agricultural District Number One. Binion Yimunor Development LLC, Town of Waywayanda, Section Block and Lot 12-1-52.2. The notice was published in the May 22 issues of the Hudson Valley Press and the Goshen Independent, the May 23 issues of the Times Community Newspapers, Walk Hill Valley and Mid-Hudson Times, and the May 25 issue of the News of the Highlands-Cormo Local.
Thank you, Jean. You're so good at this. At this time, I would like to call on Alan Sorenson, who's here with us today, Commissioner of Planning. Alan, would you kindly summarize the agricultural district inclusion of lands, please? Turn your mic on.
Thank you. This is a review of the 2024 open enrollment for the ag district application. The enrollment period ended in March of this year. We received one application, and that was by Binion Yimunar Development LLC. It's a 36.1-acre property in the town of Waywayanda. It's located along Lower Road southwest of Soons Orchard, and on the same side, west of the closed county landfill past the Soons Box Foregrow, but prior to Pellet's Island Road. So just to give you a little vicinity. Agricultural uses include greenhouse with vegetables to be sold at farmers' markets. There are two greenhouses with three being built, vegetables along with small fruit and fig trees. There are ducks and chickens for eggs, and there's a residence on the property. Soils are 100% statewide importance, consisting of Erie, Madeline, and Martin soils. The property currently has an ag exemption. This addition is compatible with the county's Ag and Farm Land Protection Plan. It's almost adjacent to existing ag use and expands the ag district's core area of production, which is something that we encourage. Since the initial submission of this initial legislative request, there's been a May 13 site visit by the Ag and Farm Land Protection Board, a May 15 Ag and Farm Land Protection Board meeting, where the addition of the parcel was unanimously approved, and we respectfully request legislative approval to add this parcel to Ag District Number One.
Thank you, Alan. If there's anyone that's wishing to speak, please sign up with the deputy clerk at the back of the room, and when your name's called, please come up to the microphone, give your name, enter town for the record, and there will be a three-minute limit for all speakers. Karen, do we have anyone signing up? No? Okay. Are you here for the ag? Okay. Okay. For now. But not forgotten. Okay, so with that said, if there are no more speakers, I would like to declare the public hearing closed. Thank you all very much.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Orange County Legislature meeting of Thursday, June 6, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to please silence your cellphones and any electronic devices you may have with you, and I would ask that you please join me in standing for a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag. At this time, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll. Fagion.
Here.
Paduk.
Here.
Amo.
President.
Benton.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Feller.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Luhon.
Here.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Here.
Friskovich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Totell.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Benelli.
Present.
Nineteen present, two absent. Thank you very much. Today, we do have some recognitions, so what I would ask, that Melanie Tanner join me at the podium along with legislator Rob Sassy as we recognize the 2024 Senior of the Year and the 2024 Outstanding Contribution by a Senior. Well, thank you all for joining us here this afternoon, and it's always a pleasure to be able to recognize our senior citizen of population and all that they contribute to for us here in Orange County. They really do work so hard to make our community a better place, and while Anne Marie Maglion, our Director of Office for the Aging, couldn't join us this afternoon, Melanie Tanner brought with her her own fan club. I understand that she is very, very popular and very well familiar with all of the workings for Office for the Aging. So we're going to start off with a proclamation for the 2024 Senior of the Year, and that individual is Charles Huber. Charles, please come up. Congratulations, sir. And this is your legislator, Rob Sassy.
Charles, congratulations. Thank you for all that you do.
Okay, and we have, here is yours. So Melanie, would you like to introduce us a little bit further to Charles and all his accomplishments? I see you have some papers there.
I will be happy to. So, all right, thank you for joining us as we congratulate two incredibly civic-minded individuals that make a difference in their community every day. So as Anne Marie, we know she wasn't able to make it, but she said she was glad that she was able to honor these two individuals just recently, a few weeks ago, at the senior citizen, the senior council luncheon back in May. So, and each year, we present the honorees with a beautiful painting done by a local senior artist. So this year, we had beautiful paintings done from an elderly woman who lived in Warwick. I actually got to meet the artist, and we love to support our older artists. And each year, we at Office for the Aging receive several nominations for the Senior of the Year and Outstanding Contribution by a Senior. We have a committee that reviews anonymous applications and selects the recipients. This year, we are excited for the two honorees. As we said, Charles Huber is the Senior of the Year, and Marie Orchard is our outstanding contribution by a Senior. So Charlie was nominated by Carmen Thomnis and Gillian Durr from Jewish Family Service. Charlie and his lovely wife Sharon, and Sharon also volunteers, so thank you, began volunteering, he began volunteering after his retirement, or as he likes to call it, his permanent vacation, and he started with the RSVP, Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Jewish Family Service Friendly Visitor Program. He has been volunteering since 2010 and has rendered over 1,386 hours of service, and he still continues to do that today. So congratulations, Charlie, on that. That's wonderful. He is a dependable companion for neighbors in need. His warm personality always puts people at ease. He likes to break the ice by saying, "Have you ever heard of a Uber driver? Well, I'm your Huber driver." Whether providing medical transportation or spreading joy with his humor, Charlie's impact resonates deeply. He is a native New Yorker and veteran and resides with his wife in Pine Bush. They are celebrating their 50-year wedding anniversary this year. So again, congratulations on that big accomplishment as well. His journey from the Air Force to public service embodies his spirit of civic duty. His words inspires, his word inspires others to embrace the joy of volunteering. In Charlie's words, volunteering is rewarding, and giving back to your community is the right thing to do. So please join me in congratulating our good friend, Charlie.
I do see that our deputy county executive is here. Harry, would you like to join us up here at the podium? I'd just like to say, Charlie, you are such a great example to your colleagues and your fellow peers throughout Orange County, and I love that your sense of humor being, that was one of the things that we put here in our proclamation. So we do have a proclamation from the legislature for you, and I'm not going to read the whole thing because a lot of it is what Melanie had just said to all of you, but it gives us great pleasure to be able to present this to you, and thank you for your sincere commitment to our community. Thank you. Rob.
Charlie, on behalf of the residents of Pine Bush and the 18th Legislative District, thank you for all that you do. Our seniors are truly one of our greatest assets, and you're proof of that. Thanks again, and congratulations.
Harry, would you like to say something?
Yes, our county executive is out of town on a different assignment today, but if he was here, he would give you his sincere congratulations and appreciation for all that you have done. One thing I want to tell you, though, my wife and I are married 53 years.
We're trying to get where you've already been.
Well, you got to get married, you got to get married. Well, you gotta get married, you gotta get married at 10 years old. That's what it is. Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Did you want to do a picture, Glenn? Let's get closer. Very special, we have our IT person doing our video, our little photography here. No end to your talent, sir, thank you. Okay, our next honoree is Marie Orchard, if I have that right. Would you like to come up and join us, or do you want us to come down there and join you? And Melanie, I'm going to allow you to introduce her to all of us.
I'll be happy to introduce my friend. So Marie Orchard is our 2024 Outstanding Contribution by a Senior. She was nominated by her friend, Julie Sa Sierra. Marie's dedication to volunteerism at the Mulberry Senior Center since 1997 is a testament to her enduring commitment to her community. At the spry age of 99 years young, yes, I did say 99, her boundless energy and enthusiasm inspires all who know and love her. Whether she is coordinating bingo or providing vital information to her neighbors, her contributions enrich the lives of those around her. She helps with the Golden Age Club membership dues and attendance, as well as activities and refreshments. She is also the public liaison to her neighbors at her senior housing facility, and she brings back pertinent information in the monthly Mulberry House newsletters to them. Marie was born and raised in Middletown. She has three children, four grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. Marie is very modest and never wants to be the center of attention, but she is a joy to be around, and I know that firsthand. Her belief in the importance of staying active and engaged in the community reflects her own experiences and serves as a guiding principle for others. Marie wants us all to know that volunteering makes you feel good, and it's nice to help people, and it keeps you from getting old. So please join me in congratulating Marie.
Marie, you are an absolute inspiration to each and every one of us, and if we can even be a little bit more like you, we'll all live better lives. So thank you for being here with us this afternoon. Here again, Melanie did a pretty good description, which is here in this proclamation that you can take home, and it is our pleasure and our sincere, sincere well wishes for you to be able to have this and to thank you for all that you have done for these years to Orange County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marie, from the bottom of my heart, and everyone here, 99 and still going. God bless you. Many more years. Thanks for all that you do.
Marie, again, from county executive Steve Newhouse, we congratulate you and wish you the best. 99 years, look at all the things that you've seen since the 1920s in this country, everything that's happened in the world, what an incredible life you've had, and I wish you many, many more good years.
And Julie, thank you so much for bringing us this lovely, lovely, dedicated lady. It was a pleasure meeting all of you this afternoon. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Melanie. Harry, you want to stay? It's Dairy Month, too. Yeah, we have another one. Legislator Ryskevich, would you like to join us at the podium, please? Okay, we have Marie Ulrich, our Agricultural Program Leader, and it is Dairy Month, and for those of you that may be here earlier, you had the opportunity to share in some local ice cream on this wonderful June day. And we do have with us the 4-H Dairy Program members, Silas Wiebold, who I promised not to put on the spot, and Lexi DeBolt. So at this point, we do have legislator Ryskevich, if you want to speak to the proclamation that was prepared for the organization for Dairy Month.
Okay, well, I'm not going to read it, but basically, this is just a proclamation recognizing Dairy Month and everything. Our dairy industry contributes to our residents here in Orange County and to recognize the industry that we have here in Orange County. This is always my favorite session, not just because we get ice cream beforehand, but because it's always great to see these young people coming out to advocate for our agricultural industry and our dairy industry. So I'm going to turn it over to them and let them say a few words if they want.
We're going to put Lexi on the spot. Here you go.
June is National Dairy Month. Dairy farmers across New York and here in Orange County work hard each and every day to bring dairy foods to your table. They care for their cows and steward their lands and natural resources and take great pride in bringing milk, cheese, and other dairy products to the supermarket shelves. Hello, my name is Alexia DeBlock. I'm with the Orange County Dairy Ambassadors. Here with me is one of our others, Silas Wiebold. If you like open spaces here in Orange County, then thank farmer. 16% of land here in Orange County is used in active farming, and half of that is devoted to dairies and their, excuse me, support grounds. Our 23 active dairy farms play a critical role in providing natural, nature's most perfect food and keeping Orange County beautiful. Remember to buy local and support your local farmers. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, my name is Silas Wiebold, and I have milking short horns and guernseys, and I like showing my guys.
So Lexi said one of the most important things, that about 16% of this county's acreage is in active agriculture, and about half of that is dairy and support lands. So those farms provide us with our working landscapes, our tax-paying landscapes, albeit sometimes less because of agricultural assessment, it's still something, and it provides jobs and, of course, the open space. We all love to see the little black and whites and, okay, other colored cows walking on the fields of green, keep that open. Much of the forested land is owned by dairy farms and other farms that it's just other support lands. So I want to keep that in mind for this county, that it's very important, all of agriculture is important, but today, we celebrate dairy farmers. I have two handouts that I want to, I will leave up here. One, please join us for our fair at the 4-H Education Center and Park in Otisville at the end of July. So here's a flyer about it. You'll be hearing more about that. And Dairy Explorers, if anybody knows of children between the age of eight and 18 who are interested in learning more, maybe you've got that kid who really is into pets but has no access to farm animals. Dairy Explorers is the program if they think they want to be a veterinarian or work with animals some way. This is how they get their first exposure. It's a multi-season program where kids learn to handle an animal, fit it for show, they actually get to take it to show at our fair, there's a special show for them, and it's a small animal, it's a calf or a little bigger, not a full-grown heifer, and it, and they get to make ice cream and do some other things and learn a lot along the way. So if you know anybody that's, I'll leave these up here, too, take them back to your districts. Of course, they're on our website, too, ccorangecounty.org, along with the events, and thank you all for entertaining us.
Thank you very much and congratulations. Harry, did you want to say anything in closing?
Of course. Just real quickly, I was born on the west side of Manhattan and knew nothing about dairy farming or anything, but then around 1979 or so, I got hired by a dairy farmer. His name was Lou Heinbach, and was the county executive at the time, and I learned a lot directly from him about the industry and how important it was to Orange County, how we were the milk train into New York City for many, many decades. And as a matter of fact, if I remember my lessons from Lou correctly, dairy farming was the number-one GDP for Orange County for quite a long time. And I think the importance of dairy farming today continues, and I'm so glad that Cornell does what they do, that people like you do what you do, to keep that in the forefront of people's minds. Congratulations.
Thank you, Harry. And in closing, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize Lucy Joyce, Cornell Cooperative Extension, that just keeps on top of everything and visits us periodically with all kinds of goodies, and it's always good to see you, Lucy. Thank you for joining us, and thank you all and congratulations for all your efforts. Before I get started, I'd also like to recognize former legislator John Vero, who's in the audience with us this afternoon. Hi, John, it's great to see you. Majority Leader Fagion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The legislature would like to recognize the following for the month of June, but before I do, I just want to take a moment, and I want to congratulate, we have to call her now a former employee, Karen Garvey-Crown, recently retired from the DMV, 35 years of service to the county, and just want to wish her the best in her retirement and happiness. So thank you, Karen. For the month of June, we are here to celebrate school graduations across all of Orange County. June is also National Safety Month. Flag Day is June 14th. World Blood Donor Day is June 14th as well. Father's Day is June 16th. Juneteenth will be celebrated on June 19th. The first day of summer is June 20th. June is also Pride Month and National Immigrant Heritage Month. And in closing, Madam Chair, if I may, today is also the 80th anniversary of D-Day, a day that will forever be remembered in American history, a level of bravery displayed the likes of which we have never seen before or since. And so with, with that, I just wanted to make sure everyone got their American flag, and please take them home with you, and please spread the word and the history of D-Day and its impact on the freedoms that we share today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And we move, any public participation before the meeting. Thank you. Majority Leader Fagion once again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of May 2, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. We will commence voting on items, agenda items, A, receive and file, and numbers 1 through 43. Questions or anything? Okay. And at this point, we will move to Communications. A is received and filed, and then number one, resolution, please.
Legislator Feller, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, resolution of the legislature of the county of Orange honoring the memory of Francis Edward Devitt, outstanding citizen, businessman, dedicated public servant, and former county legislator for the 11th Legislative District, I'm sorry, 18th Legislative District.
Second.
Questions or comments? We do, we have prepared a resolution, and we also have a proclamation that will be sent to his family. I believe legislator Ron Feller will deliver it to his family. They couldn't be with us this afternoon, but I just would like to read the last whereas. And it says, "Whereas Francis Edward Devitt influenced many important public policy decisions made during his outstanding eight-year legislative career, which began in 1978 and ended in 1985. During his tenure, he served on the rules enactments in governmental relations and personnel and compensation legislative committees, as well as the Labor Relations Advisory Committee and the Land Acquisition Standing Committee. He focused on the importance of land preservation and economic development within the region. His service to Orange County is deeply appreciated. Now therefore, hereby be resolved that we, the legislature of the Orange County, do hereby formally memorialize our profound sentiments on the occasion of the passing of our former colleague Francis Edward Devitt. On behalf of ourselves and all the people of the county of Orange, to those interest in service he has so dedicated, in honoring his memory, let us strive to uphold the values of service, innovation, and compassion that defined his remarkable life, and it is future resolved that this resolution be spread upon the records of this body as a permanent memorial and as an enduring standard for its members and all citizens." Thank you. This is a roll call, so Jean, if you would proceed.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo. Anagnostakis. Benton. Cheney. Ellers. Feller. Hines. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Ryskevich. Sassy. Stiganga. Sutherland. Totell. Tui. Benelli. 20 eyes.
Okay, we move to number two, please.
Legislator Benton, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution amending resolution number 75 of 2024 to correct an inaccurate calculation of the corrected tax amount with regard to the solar exemption that was mistakenly not applied.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a roll call vote, so a voice vote, rather. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried, and we move to number three, which will also be a voice vote.
Legislator Benton, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution amending resolution number 76 of 2024 to correct an inaccurate calculation of the corrected tax amount with regard to the solar exemption that was mistakenly not applied.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. I'm sorry, four. Number four, please.
Legislators Ryskevich, Hines, Amo, Fagion, Cheney, Sutherland, Paduk, Stiganga, Ellers, Sassy, Ramos, and all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, resolution urging the state of New York to enact the rescue EMS package of legislation to strengthen our emergency medical services.
Questions or comments? Legislator Ryskevich.
Yeah, I just, I know this passionately in both committees, I just want to thank everybody for that. This is a effort by NISAC to get to, or state legislature, to pass a series of legislation to support EMS services, not only here in Orange County, but throughout the state. It has gotten to a critical point where, you know, we don't have the resources needed to serve our constituents properly. So this legislation will go a long way in doing that. I believe the state senate did pass it the other day, and we're waiting on the assemblies. Thank you.
Anything further? Legislator Ryskevich, I would like to thank you for bringing this to our attention and doing the research and working with NISAC to be able to bring this forth so that we can proceed with this much-needed strength to be able to handle emergency medical services. So I appreciate your efforts. Anything else, then we'll do a roll call.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo. Anagnostakis. Benton. Cheney. Ellers. Feller. Hines. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Okay, we move to number 5, please.
Legislators Fagion and Amo, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution confirming the appointment by the county executive to the Orange County Planning Board pursuant to section 9-3 of the County Administrative Code.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
We move to number 6.
Legislators Fagion and Paduke, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution appointing Courtney Canfield-Green, a Commissioner of Elections pursuant to sections 3-200 and 3-204 of the Election Law and Act Number 3 of 1936 of the former Orange County Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Number 7, please.
Legislators Fagion and Paduke, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, resolution appointing Louise B. Vandemark, a Commissioner of Elections pursuant to sections 3-200 and 3-204 of the Election Law and Act Number 3 of 1936 of the former Orange County Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Okay, we're at 8A, which is received and filed. And then we move to number 8.
Legislators O'Donnell, Stiganga, Paduke, and Cheney, with all Republicans as cosponsors, Local Law Introductory Number 1 of 2024, a local law amending and restating Local Law Number 8 of 2007 as previously amended by Local Law Number 2 of 2011 and Local Law Number 11 of 2013, establishing the Orange County Electrical Licensing Board and providing for the qualifications, examination, licensing, and regulation of electricians in Orange County, New York.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 19 eyes, one abstention.
Thank you. We move to number 9, please.
Legislators Stiganga and Luhon, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Youth Bureau to accept and appropriate funds from the friends of the Orange County Youth Bureau pursuant to section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Questions or comments? This is a voice vote. Questions or comments? Then, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. We move to number 10.
Legislators Tui and Benton, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution of the Orange County Legislature, a final environmental impact statement under the State Environmental Quality Review Act with respect to the proposed longevity improvements to and treatment capacity expansion of the Harriman Wastewater Treatment Plant of Orange County Sewer District Number 1.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator Tui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you. This has been, this is a long day in the coming, in the making, decades, it's been talked about decades, and then probably the last six years put a big push on to get this to this day. The county legislator, legislature declared itself lead agency in this. It was a type 1 action, and the seeker was a positive declaration. And basically, we had to do a draft environmental impact study. That took several years. And then we did, we came up with the public hearing, and it was a lot of work. And this brings us to where this will finally move to the final environmental impact study. And for that, I'd like to thank the following, the Chairman of Physical Services, Barry Chaney, also the Orange County Sewer District Number 1 Advisory Board, the legislative staff, the DPW and EFNS, our county attorney's office, and Delaware Engineering. Without all the expert advice and able to move this forward, this could still have been a long time away. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And thank you for your leadership on the advisory, legislator Tui. As you said, this has been a long time in coming, and this is a momentous day for those of us that have been working with improving, improvements and expansion. And I'd like to recognize Mary Beth Brancone, who's from Delaware Engineering, who's here with us this afternoon, and our county attorney, because we've all worked very hard to bring us to this day. So, thank you. And I believe legislator Amo, you had a comment or a question? Okay, then. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Number 11, please.
Legislators Tui and Tortel, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution of the Orange County Legislature, assuming lead agency status under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, with respect to the purchase only of Sugarloaf Mountain property in the town of Chester, classifying the action as a type 1 action and determining that the action will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none or seeing none? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Okay, we move to number 12, please, and this will be a roll call vote.
Legislators Riskevich, Feller, Benton, Cheney, O'Donnell, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution approving the purchase of 309 plus or minus acres of property in the town of Chester and making a supplemental appropriation to the 2024 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks, Recreation, and Conservation pursuant to section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Questions or comments? Majority Leader Fagion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As my colleague Janet Sutherland and I know, we always say the west is the best, the western part of Orange County, and I'll throw legislator Riskevich in the mix, too. Western Orange County has some of the most beautiful and open green spaces. It's the last of the true wilderness and countryside that we so much enjoy and love. And I guess the word's getting out, because the rest of the county might be getting a little bit jealous. And that's a good thing, because we have these beautiful, natural, open spaces, and to protect them and preserve them in that way is a great compliment to our entire community. It benefits all of us. And so this resolution here before us today is a great step forward, and I'm proud to support this, and I look forward to seeing this passing and moving on. And I think Pete Tui is going to lead us on a hike to the top of the mountain. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's what I've been told. Any further comments? Minority Leader Paduke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In committee, I voted against this, and my concerns have been, through our parks, all through Orange County, they can use a lot of updating themselves. We keep wanting to buy more parkland, which is good, but we need to spend more money on keeping our parks up. I'm going to support this today because it's going to pass, and parks are important. I just wish that we'd recognized $2 million could have done a lot more for our existing parks. So, I'm going to support it today, but I just want to make my concern heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Number 13, please.
Legislators Benton, Tui, Hines, Anagnostakis, and all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, bond resolution dated June 6, 2024, bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the reconstruction and/or rehabilitation of various historic structures at county parks, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $700,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $700,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Questions or comments? This is a bond resolution, so therefore it does require a two-thirds vote. And if there's no questions or comments, I'll ask the roll to be called.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
And we move to number 14. This is also a bond resolution, therefore it will require a two-thirds vote.
Legislators Paduke, Menuda, Benton, and Anagnostakis, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, amending bond resolution dated June 6, 2024, bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, amending the bond resolution adopted March 7, 2024, in relation to the reconstruction of various county highways paving at the total estimated cost of $2,600,000.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator Menuda.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I just would like to state how well our roads here in Orange County and local roads are being maintained, and those are being maintained with state dollars. And I hope the state will step up and start maintaining their roads. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Okay, we move to number 15.
Legislators Tortel, Menuda, Benton, and O'Donnell, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, bond resolution dated June 6, 2024, bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of road improvement measures, stating the estimated total maximum cost thereof is $100,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $300,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Just a reminder, this does require a two-thirds vote since it is a bond resolution. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Number 16, and this will be requiring a two-thirds vote as well.
Legislators Tui, Tortel, Benton, Hines, Riskevich, with all Democrats as cosponsors, bond resolution dated June 6, 2024, bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of concrete bridges to replace various county-owned wooden bridges on the Heritage Trail, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $1,100,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $1,100,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, I didn't see you. Legislator Menuda.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman. So, in committee, I did not support this. However, at that time, my concern was the original intent of the Heritage Trail and how it's being used. And since then, I've realized how much it is being used and that these improvements really do help the safety to those using the trail as well as the EMS and other emergency service workers. So I'll be supporting this today.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
And we move to number 17. Being a bond resolution, it will require a two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tortel, Menuda, Benton, Hines, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, bond resolution dated June 6, 2024, bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the preparation of surveys, preliminary, and detailed plans, specifications, and estimates necessary for the replacement of the county-owned Highland Falls Bridge in the town of Highlands and Village of Highland Falls, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $100,000, appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds of the county to pay the cost thereof.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Number 18, please.
Legislators Tui, Tortel, Benton, and Cheney, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors, bond resolution dated June 6, 2024, bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the acquisition of various machinery and apparatus for the Department of Public Works fleet replacement, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $1,500,000, appropriating said amount therefore, including $1,400,000 expected to be received from the state of New York, and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds of the county to finance the balance of said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a bond resolution, therefore requiring a two-thirds vote. Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
And we move to number 19, please.
Legislators Tui, Cheney, Benton, and Fagion, with all Republicans as cosponsors, bond resolution dated June 6, 2024, bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the acquisition of fleet and new equipment for transfer stations number 1, number 2, and number 3, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $1,320,000, appropriating said amount therefore, including $70,000 expected to be received from estate sources, and authorizing the issuance of $1,250,000 bonds of the county to finance the balance of said appropriation.
Second.
Questions or comments? This does require a two-thirds vote since it is a bond resolution, and it appears that all of these particular items that we've been dealing with are going to show us we're going to have a very busy DPW throughout the summer. So, at that point, would you do roll call, please?
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
Okay, we move to number 20, please.
Legislators Benton and Luhon, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution to authorize the Orange County Division of Budget to transfer funds from a reserve fund to the Water Authority operating budget.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one? Okay, roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. 20 eyes.
And we move to number 21.
Legislators Benton and Luhon, with all Republicans as cosponsors, resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2023 Orange County budget for year-end cleanup pursuant to section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion.
Yes.
Paduke.
Yes.
Amo, Anagnostakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy... Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
And we move to number twenty-two, please.
Legislators Sassy and Stiganga, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution confirming the appointment and reappointments by the county executive to the Orange County Police Advisory Board pursuant to Section 18.07A of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, this is a, oh no, this is a roll call. Roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
And we move to number twenty-three, please.
Legislators Hines, Stiganga, Ellers, Sassy, Ramos, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services Fire Division to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services under the fiscal year 2021 Hazmat Grant Program pursuant to Section 99-H of a general municipal law as Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried, and we move to number twenty-four.
Legislators Hines, Stiganga, Ellers, Sassy, and Ramos, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services Fire Division to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services under the fiscal year 2022 Hazmat Grant Program pursuant to Section 99-H of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
This is also a voice vote. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. And we move to number twenty-five.
Legislators Hines, Stiganga, Ellers, Sassy, Ramos, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services Fire Division to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services under the fiscal year 2021 Technical Rescue and Urban Research and Rescue Grant Program pursuant to Section 99-H of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Again, this is a voice vote, but any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. And we move to number twenty-six.
Legislators Hines, Stiganga, Ellers, Sassy, Ramos, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office to accept and appropriate funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services under the fiscal year 2021 Explosive Detection K-9 Team Grant Program pursuant to Section 99-H of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? This too is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move to number twenty-seven.
Legislators Hines, Stiganga, Ellers, Sassy, and Ramos, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office to accept and appropriate funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services under the fiscal year 2021 Explosive Detection K-9 Team Grant Program pursuant to Section 99-H of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? This too is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Number twenty-eight, please.
Legislators Tortel and Tui, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Employment and Training Administration to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Office of Temporary Disability Assistance for the Youth Employment Program pursuant to Section 99-H of a general municipal law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a voice vote, so all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion is carried, and we move to number twenty-nine.
Legislators Sutherland and Aimo, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Department of Health for the Adolescent Tobacco Use Prevention Act pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. And we move to number thirty.
Legislators Tortel and Sutherland, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Mental Health to appropriate unspent Welcome Orange Geriatric Initiative Funds pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. We move to number thirty-one.
Legislators Tui, Aimo, and Agnastakis, Sutherland, Ellers, Tortel, Ramos, Feller, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature recognizing June 25, 2024 through July 1, 2024 as Helen Keller Deaf Blind Awareness Week.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator Tui, please.
Yes, I'd like to read the resolution.
Please do so.
Whereas Helen Keller was an American lecturer, author, and activist deaf and blind since early childhood and living in an era where most individuals similarly afflicted were confined to an asylum, Helen Keller overcame her disabilities with the aid of mentor Ann Sullivan and rose to international renown. Keller used her fame to educate others about the blind and to raise funds for related charities. And whereas deaf blindness is a very severe disability, and whereas it is in the best interest of Orange County to encourage the full participation of Americans with multi-sensory disabilities in our economy by fostering the employment of and promoting housing and recreational options for people who are deaf-blind, thus maximizing their opportunities for productive life in the community of their choice. And whereas today, people with dual sensory loss should have options to choose their preferred lifestyles. And whereas it is highly appropriate and necessary to publicize the abilities and potential of fellow citizens who are deaf-blind or severely vision and hearing impaired, and to recognize Helen Keller as a guiding example of courage, hope, determination, and achievement for other individuals who are deaf-blind. Therefore, be it resolved that Orange County Legislature recognizes June 25, 2024 through July 1, 2024 as Helen Keller Deaf Blind Awareness Week for Orange County and conveys these sentiments to every citizen of Orange County that all might raise awareness and deaf blindness in our community. Dated June 6, 2024. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Legislator Tui. Are there any other questions or comments? And roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk? Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
Okay, we move to number thirty-two, please.
Legislators Luhon and Benton, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. Resolution confirming the appointments and reappointments by the county executive to the Orange County Human Rights Commission pursuant to Resolution Number 129 of 1970.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I would ask the roll to be called.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
And we move to number thirty-three.
Legislators Stiganga, Luhon, Hines, Ellers, Sassy, and Ramos, with all Republicans as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create two enforcement technicians part-time at the Orange County Department of Emergency Services pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
Okay, number thirty-four, please.
Legislators Luhon, Fagion, Sassy, and Ramos, with all Republicans as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create executive assistant district attorney at the Orange County District Attorney's Office pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
Number thirty-five, please.
Legislators Luhon, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, with all Republicans as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish one public health nurse and create public health licensed practical nurse at the Orange County Department of Health pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
And we move to number thirty-six.
Legislators Stiganga, Luhon, Tortel, and Ramos, with all Republicans as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish director of program integrity and create supervisor of program integrity and contract management at the Orange County Department of Social Services pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
Okay, we move to number thirty-seven, please.
Legislators Menuda, Stiganga, Ramos, and Tortel, with all Republicans as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to reallocate support collection supervisor and support investigation supervisor at the Orange County Department of Social Services pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one? Roll call, please, when you're ready.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
Number thirty-eight, please.
Legislators Menuda, Stiganga, Tui, and Tortel, with all Republicans as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create fiscal technician at the Orange County Employment and Training Administration pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, and Agnastakis, Benton, Cheney, Ellers, Feller, Hines, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Riskevich, Sassy, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Benelli. Twenty eyes.
Okay, we move to number thirty-nine, please.
Legislators Fagion, Menuda, and Tortel, with all Republicans and all Democrats as cosponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create park maintenance leader at the Orange County Department of Parks Recreation and Conservation pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Legislator Sassy. Yes, oil? No, your light's not on.
Okay, real quick, I'm loud enough. Uh, like...
Actually, the...
And now we have it, we have it. Um, I just want to thank all those legislators that were able to attend a tour of our county parks recently. Thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and forty-two. Can they be voted on collectively? I mean, they're the same thing, possibly, but to my colleague, Mr. Paduk's point, Michael, these do create those much-needed positions. Um, and the tour pointed that out. In 1979, off the top of my head, we had thirty-seven park employees. That number is roughly the same today, and our parks have doubled in size. And those legislators that were able to attend the tour did see that a lot of repair and a lot of attention is needed to our parks. Our parks continue to be destination points for county residents and their guests, and we certainly want to provide them with a great experience. So all of these positions and all the appropriation of the funding is to do exactly that. So I urge you to vote yes on this. A yes is in great support of our great park system. A yes is in great support of our great park system. Thank you. And Mr. Fagion, the open space, the West is the best. Come out to Crawford. Six working farms still. Thank you.
Okay, uh, as far as your request, if there's no objection, as you said, this was a package and, uh, for these park positions and for those of us that did take the tour, it was clearly apparent that these are desperately needed. Uh, our population is going up, but meanwhile, our staffing has remained the same for a long period of time. So, um, this is something that I believe most of us support, if not all of us. So if there is no objections, I could couple this together as long as we mention each and every one of the positions. Are there any objections to that? So, do you want me to do it or do you want to do it? Each? So it would be, well, wait a minute, hold on. No, we can't do it because some are acts and some are resolutions. So we're going to do them separately because by the time we do this, we'll be finished voting on these. So, uh, number 39 is the park maintenance leader. If there's no other questions, then I'll have the roll taken.
Seeing none, please call the roll, Jean.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo Anagnostakis Benton Cheney Elers Feller Hines Luhon Menuda O'Donnell Ramos Riskevich Sassy Stiganga Sutherland Tortel Tui Benelli 20 eyes.
Okay, number 40. Yeah, we're going to do them separately.
Legislators Fagion and Menuda and Tortel with all Republicans and all Democrats as co-sponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2024 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks Recreation and Conservation to create one park maintenance leader position pursuant to section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo Anagnostakis Benton Cheney Elers Feller Hines Luhon Menuda O'Donnell Ramos Riskevich Sassy Stiganga Sutherland Tortel Tui Benelli 20 eyes.
Number 41.
Legislators Fagion Menuda and Tortel with all Republicans and all Democrats as co-sponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create seven skilled laborers at the Orange County Department of Parks Recreation and Conservation pursuant to section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo Anagnostakis Benton Cheney Elers Feller Hines Luhon Menuda O'Donnell Ramos Riskevich Sassy Stiganga Sutherland Tortel Tui Benelli 20 eyes.
Okay, and the last one, number 42.
Legislators Fagion Menuda Tortel with all Republicans and all Democrats as co-sponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2024 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Parks Recreation and Conservation to create seven skilled laborer positions pursuant to section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Roll call please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo Anagnostakis Benton Cheney Elers Feller Hines Luhon Menuda O'Donnell Ramos Riskevich Sassy Stiganga Sutherland Tortel Tui Benelli 20 eyes.
Number 43 please.
Legislators Benton Luhon and Fagion with all Republicans and all Democrats as co-sponsors. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create director of application services, director of cybersecurity, systems integration manager, law enforcement, four senior network support specialists, and two cybersecurity analysts at the Orange County Department of Information Technology Services pursuant to section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll do the roll call please.
Fagion?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo Anagnostakis Benton Cheney Elers Feller Hines Luhon Menuda O'Donnell Ramos Riskevich Sassy Stiganga Sutherland Tortel Tui Benelli 20 eyes, Madam Chair, and the desk is clear.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I just wanted to take a moment. I know that Commissioner Miller is not here at this meeting, but I just wanted to point out that, um, she obviously is going to be retiring at the end of the month. And I just wanted to say what a pleasure it has been, um, as Chairwoman of the Human Services Committee for the past two years to work with, um, with Darcy. I hope she's watching at, from her office. If not, Commissioner Miller was, um, a beacon of compassion, a tremendous amount of knowledge, and her professionalism, um, was really second to none. And it's an honor to have been able to work with her and I wish her the best in, uh, in retirement.
Thank you, Legislature Sutherland. Legislature Tui.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, Chairwoman. I just want to, uh, echo and concur with Legislature Sutherland. Um, the last two years, several years, I was able to, uh, work closely with Commissioner Miller on the Health and Mental Health Committee and, um, and also years before as a member of that committee. Uh, and she's just a, uh, the ultimate professional. Um, her work ethic is second to none and, and how she did it and, and juggled both of those, um, positions, uh, is, is amazing and, um, you know, it's going to be very hard to replace her, but I certainly thank her for all of her efforts over the years in her career here and wish her the best. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure we all will agree that Darcy Miller is one of a kind. She was a gem here in Orange County and she was sorely be missed. I'm sure all of us can agree that we really enjoyed working with her. We enjoyed her compassion and she was a role model for people to aspire to. Her caring and her knowledge is unsurpassed. So on behalf of the entire legislature, Darcy, if you're watching or whatever you do watch, we really will miss you and thank you. Did I see a hand up there, Legislature Benton?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I should make a comment to concur with all other comments, but I can literally say I remember going back when Darcy was the assistant to Krish Ashman. That's when I first met her, back in probably 1998.
Yes. Yeah, she's come a long way and she's done a great job. So with that, is there any other comments? Okay. Okay, before we close, we do have one speaker, Dr. Bob Link. Do you speak? Mr. Dr. Link, good afternoon, welcome. I know you were anxious to speak before, but sorry you had to wait. No, you have to turn it on, sir. There you go. When you see the red light, you're good to go.
Hot dog. All right, I've been coming here since February of last year. Medicaid rates haven't changed. I know you're all politicians and I'm sure when you became a politician, you said you wanted to do right. You're my first line of government. I go to the state, they send me back to you. I go to the assembly, they send me back to you. A few people say, we're, we're going to help you. You know, tell them I told you to call, go there. So I go there. They say, go back there. I need somebody to make me an appointment. That's all I'm asking. I'll go anywhere. I even called down in Long Island, all the people I know. They said, it's Orange County, what do you want me to do? You know, they made cream cheese, that's what they made, that's what they're famous for. But I need somebody to make one phone call and say, Bob, you can go to Albany. I already got so-and-so to talk. Three people went out of business in Orange County. You said you value your seniors. Okay, you got more people going out of business. You got three more people, I'm sorry, six more people that probably won't make the end of the month. Joy just got another $30,000 in unfunded mandates, but she didn't get a raise. You all had a raise since 2012, maybe 10 raises. She hasn't gotten a raise. She did get one penny a mile to put in, um, cameras. So, you know, each, each camera costs, uh, $350, but she got a penny a mile, but it only lasted for six months. Okay? I need somebody to make a phone call to say, go see, there's somebody in the state. That's all I'm asking. I don't need, you know, I know so-and-so, tell him I told you to call. They say, go back to the county legislature. You're my first line of government. Please help me. Have a great day. Enjoy your Father's Day. And I have no, I don't know what else to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Link. Entertainer motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you all very much. Have a pleasant evening.